Beginning at 7:02 PM, Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Wallace.
Present.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Dunne.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
And Counselor Shan.
Present.
So as I previously mentioned, we're going to jump right into the first item on the agenda, which is the annual election of the City Council President. I'm going to do it as I have done in years past, and I'm going to do that same roll call. And when I state your name, would you please give me your choice of president? Any questions? Then I will start. First on the list, Counselor Vogel.
Counselor Shan.
Counselor Wallace.
Counselor Shan.
Counselor Wright.
Counselor Shan.
Counselor Zee.
Counselor Shan.
Counselor Cameron.
Counselor Heather Shan.
Counselor Dunne.
Ward three Counselor Heather Shan.
Counselor Khan.
Heather Louise Shan.
Counselor Lane.
Heather Shan.
Counselor McCauley.
Heather Shan.
Counselor Preston.
The Honorable Heather Shan.
And Counselor Shan.
Heather Shan.
In a squeaker of a vote, we now elect Council President Shan.
All right, now we can do the seat swap. Thank you, Clerk Clark Jones. So if everyone would arise, like to have a moment of silence for two folks that we've lost over the holidays.
Sorry, it's okay.
One was Walter Smith Jr. He passed away at the young age of 91 this past Friday. Walter was a pipe layer in our Works, Newburyport Water Department for 38 years. His two daughters precede him, and his grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, will also miss him dearly. Another person we lost over the holidays was Brian A. Cashman. His grandfather is that picture over in the corner. He was a man who loved his family, his friends, his alma mater, as well as his long-distinguished service in law enforcement. He passed away in December after a short illness he was at a young age of 67. He was enormously proud of his career in law enforcement, and later he adapted his skills in private sector. The greatest compliment you could pay him was to call him a cop's cop. He began his career as a deputy sheriff with the Essex County Sheriff's Department. He became a federal special agent in the Naval Criminal Investigative Service. Later in his career, Brian was appointed to the New Hampshire Parole Board, and in doing so, served in every level of sworn public safety, local, county, state, and federal. An extremely rare career achievement. Through it all, as he fulfilled his role of as husband and father, he served his alma mater, the esteemed College of the Holy Cross in Worcester, where he earned his degree in 1997. He has a proud Holy Cross family legacy, which included his father, George Cashman Sr., class of '47, his brother, George Cashman Jr. of '73, and his daughter Emily. In short, Brian bled purple. In 2010, Holy Cross presented him with the highest alumni honor, the Hock Signal Award, presented to those who have demonstrated many years of dedication and extraordinary service to the Holy Cross. He is left by his wife, his daughters, and son, Emily and Patrick, many brothers and sisters, friends, nieces, nephews, and grand. He will be missed, so a moment of silence for both gentlemen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Through the flag of the United States of America. And through the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, since you've already graciously done the call to order, Clerk Jones, I think we're up to late files.
So you will see that there are two late files. They're both applications for second-hand motor vehicle licenses to eventually go to license and permits.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files?
Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comment. As we are getting back into the swing of things, if there's anyone in the Zoom attendees who would like to make public comments tonight, please raise your hand. I will call on you first as soon as Clerk Jones gets to the podium. With those from the -- thank you. All right, we have one in -- all right, so as far as Zoom, I see Jess Stone. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Jess Stone, residence Eight Oil Drive, Newport, Mass. I do have one question according to your executive session tonight in regards to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21B. In order to invoke that executive session, for potential litigation requires a chair to state all subjects that they disclose topics. Can you elaborate on what is within that executive session agenda tonight without compromising any possible litigation as it pertains to Doyle Drive? Is there a reason for privacy on this matter? And if so, can you speak to the presumption of possible litigation enacted in part of the City Liberty Court versus David Daley or David Daley's General Contracting LLC and any other permits he works under under the LLC advisement this year?
Thank you, Ms. Stone. That will be discussed at the end after good of the order, where Clerk Jones will read what the executive session will entail, and that will be the amount of information that we will be disclosing tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stone. And that's it for those participants online. We have one in council chambers, Jane Snow.
Jane Snow, Nine Coffin Street. To start the new year out on a great foot, I just wanted to say how nice it was to pull up in front of the building this evening and notice all of the decking out of Tracy Square, and Tracy Square is back to being a park. So thank you very much to Mike Kennesi and his crew, and any of the DPW folks that worked on that. It's a great positive new step for the new year, and the nice addition of the sculptures that you're going to talk about later should be beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. All right. That being the end of public comment, Mayor's Comment.
All right, good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. Great to see everyone. I'm back, I'm healthy, ready for the new year. So I sent this out earlier today, so again, I won't read it to you, but I'll just touch on a few things, and a lot of these things are initiatives that will be coming up in the next few weeks. So just a Plum Island dredge update. You know, we're looking for HNL to start the dredge back up after finishing the nine-foot channel in November. Senator Tar's office and my office did have a call with Army Corps of Engineers today, and so we are being told that on or around January 14th, the dredge will start back up, so that's great news. And just also a side note to that, only 10% of the sand has been put back on the beach, so we still have got 90% to go, which is great news for everyone down there looking at the waves crashing towards where we live. But no, it's good news. That just means we have a lot more sand to put out there. I think once this dredge gets started, we're really going to see, you know, see a difference right away, so we're excited about that. The biggest thing in your packet tonight from my office is the Cutter West End Fire Station. I'm not going to go into this a few bit, a few -- go into this too much, because this will be talked about on Thursday at Budget and Finance. I will have the whole team there, so Project Manager Jordy Vining, Wentworth Street Architects, and Fire Chief, Acting Fire Chief Steve Bradbury will be there, as well as Ethan Manning. So we'll get, we'll really dive into that on Thursday. Parks reorg plan, we are just finishing up on our end, and we are looking at the end of this month to resubmit that to you. We are excited about that. We've really taken all the feedback we've received, and we've done a lot of work these few months since we've pulled it off your docket, so we're excited to share that with you, and we'll be having conversations in the coming weeks. Again, I think we're lucky this month that we have our first meeting tonight, and then our last one is until January 30th, so we have a few weeks in between to talk about these things some more. Newburyport Youth Services as well, I think that also will be on the docket on Thursday, so I won't go into that too much, but we'll do a little update on Thursday. We're also looking for some figures to come to you around looking at furthering the design of the project, so we don't lose any time here while we're discussing whether we're going to move forward with any other portion of the project. We'd like to continue the design process, and so we're looking on getting some figures from that. So we won't have those by Thursday, but as soon as we have them, we will reach out to the council, so that will probably be your second meeting as well. Searches for our DPS Director and Fire Chief are ongoing. You'll see in your packet tonight the nine-member screening committee that I have to put together for our Court of Ordinances, so hopefully we can get that expedited quickly so we can actually jump into this process. So I've got February 1st kind of marked as when we should be able to get going, but I will leave that up to you. But we really put a great screening committee together. We have a couple councils that agree to serve, Counsel Preston and Counsel McCauley, so thank you for that. So we're looking forward to getting that process going. And DPS Director was officially posted last week, so it's now out there in the open. We are now competing with a few other communities as well, Amesbury, Salisbury, Natick, to name a few, but we're excited to see, you know, what kind of response we get to that, and then we'll keep that process moving, and then that screening committee will start looking at those resumes we receive as well. Just a few more things, State Street Gas Line Replacement has started. I think you've probably seen the signs on State Street, so we're looking forward to get that going, so as quick as we get that started, weather permitting, we can get that finished as well. Middle Street will be affected with that project as well. So again, it's just going to be a few months that we're going to have parking just on one side of State Street, and then hopefully we can just get that project done as quickly as possible. Another good thing, and I want to thank a couple councils for posting this on the social media this week, but the Economic Development Strategy Public Forum this week, it's happening Wednesday, January 11th, 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. You know, we've been working with Carl Seidman out of MIT and Civic Moxie. You know, we've been kind of going through this process in our, kind of at the public information phase, which is why we're doing this forum. So again, I suggest anyone interested in this, please show up to the Senior Center at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, the 11th. You know, it'd be great to get some public feedback. You know, we've had a lot of feedback from stakeholders here in the city, but now we're looking for you to come with your ideas about how we can move Newburyport forward. And finally, State of the City, January 25th, I know it's all on your calendars, and I know you're looking forward to it, we're looking forward to it, too. It's going to be a great opportunity to talk about this past year, and then also look forward to what we want to do coming up this year. And also, we will be bringing to you the First Annual Public and Community Service Awards. We've extended the deadline, so we've actually got till the end of the week, but we've had so many people write in already, so we're really excited about that. I really wanted to put my own spin on the State of the City. In what better way than honoring some of the great work going on by our citizens here in Newburyport? So that's really the fun part of the 25th, so hopefully we get a good crowd for that, and I hope to see you all there. That's it. Oh, actually, one more thing. So going forward, we have a school's, a school committee retreat on the 17th, and one of the topics will be how I will be communicating with you through them, since we aren't doing the Education Subcommittee anymore, so it'll probably be something like this, maybe a section of my Mayor's Update that will handle the schools, but I'm going to talk about that with them, and then I'll come with you with that on the next. But some of the other topics that we're going to talk about on the Subcommittee is, of the retreat, are goals for the year. We're looking at bringing back possibly the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, and then I mentioned that communication piece, so that is it.
Questions, Counsel Vogel?
Just a quick, is the Economic Development Forum, is that going to be televised, recorded and televised?
I don't believe so, no. Go ahead, Andrew.
Just because so much of it is really a workshop style, a lot of it is spent in small groups discussing, a lot of that doesn't lend itself well to provoke participation, so the hope is to have folks there. Follow-up could include some surveys and other ways to engage with folks who aren't capable to be there that time, so we'll look for some ways to engage with people who can't be there that night.
Thank you.
Counselor Khan.
Yes, great, thank you for the update. Thank you for seeing the screening committee for the chief, fire chief. I guess I missed who's on the screening committee for the DPS Director. I feel like I should know, but is that on the website, or I don't know if I've seen a list.
Take out regarding it.
So that hasn't been formed yet?
Yeah. Well, I've talked about some councils about it, but it hasn't, hasn't been, because that, the reason why I submitted my list, because I have to submit my list to you about the Fire Chief search, but the screening.
Got it, so that one will be coming to us. Okay, great, thank you.
Are there questions? All right, thank you, Mayor.
Have a great meeting, thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for December 12. Communication 118, which is the 29th Annual Frigid Fiber, to go to license and permits. There are two transfers, 145 Finance Committee, $10,700, to Essex North Shore Tech School, same amount. Transfer 146 DPS Receipts Reserved, $125,000, to Fuel and Oil, both to go to B&amp;F. Appointments, first two to go to community service. Appointment 361 and 362, Alice Sheridan and Paul Bushy, 11 Beck Street, One Denit Drive to the Council on Aging until 2-1-2028. The following reap pointment, Jennifer Blanchett, Four Island Lane, Newbury, as zoning administrator until 12-31-23, to go to planning and development. Following two appointments, Human Rights Commission are not designated to go anywhere unless you so wish. Appointment 364, Ben Harmon, 365 Shane Coff, 298 High Street and 70 High Street, again, both going till January 30th, 2026.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I will. Ben Harmon is Human Rights Commission, an earlier version of the agenda, had him said Historical Commission, although in the packet, the appointment letter said Human Rights Commission.
Does everyone understand? Okay. Then, thank you. Appointment 366, Christopher Sawtelle, 20 Summer Street, to the Historical Commission until 2-1-2026, to go to planning and development. Appointment 367, Lena Mata, 7 Everett Drive, to the Board of Health, 2-1-26, that's to go to public safety.
Is there more?
I'm out, I mean, if you have any change on that first page, maybe now?
Well, yeah, if I, if we could take the communication, the Frigid Fiber, that's put it in the regular agenda.
It is out. Thank you.
Anything else?
Hold on, we've got to finish reading it.
And Counsel Preston?
Yeah, so this has been a little bit of an ongoing discussion, and I'm not sure if I need to make a motion here or what, but it's my understanding that Council on Aging and Historical Commission are commissions and appointments that do not have to go to, I have it here, after we talked about it, Richard, earlier.
To committee.
To committee. So I would like to make a motion to remove those from the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that motion?
So I am making a motion to remove.
You don't have to motion, you can just take them out.
Oh, well, I'd like to take out appointments 361, 362, and 366.
Okay. All right, Counsel Khan?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Do I need to stand, or I could stay seated doing this? I know it's very informal, but I thought a Historical Commission, at one point, we did have that actually assigned to go to planning and development, but I agree with you on Council on Aging, but Historical Commission does.
I have.
So these are out, these are out now, and so we can dispose of them.
We'll take care of it once we're done.
When we.
Okay.
Oh, okay, got it, sorry.
We're out of the consent.
Got it, okay.
All right, so is that it for the consent agenda, Clerk Jones?
Yeah, so 361, 362, and 363 are out for regular agenda, right? And Application 118.
Wait, sorry, what were the numbers used?
On appointments, it's the first three.
No.
It's 361, 362, and 366. The two.
Two on Council on Aging.
And one for Historical Commission.
Got you. 361, 362, and 366.
Yes.
363 stayed. Got you.
Yes.
Don't you also have, Clerk, the three items coming out of the form of community services?
Second page, yeah.
Second page.
Yes. So to that point, there's three things removed from, under committees. It's community services now called. Communication 299, Ordinance 103, and Communication 406, they are coming out with a vote on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to the regular agenda. Mayor's Update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
All those in favor to receive and file the Mayor's Update, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading appointments.
Motion to approve 361 and 362 on first reading?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, to approve first reading of 361, 362, Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion to refer 366 to planning and development?
Second.
Discussion?
Did we do that in the consent agenda?
No, it was removed.
Oh, you pulled that one out, sorry.
Okay.
That was moved by Counsel Zee, seconded by?
I didn't second, I think.
I seconded it.
Is there discussion? Counsel, Counsel Cameron?
And I certainly take Counsel Preston in her word that whatever it says in the City Council rules, and I do think this is a committee that sometimes creeps up to the City Council on certain matters, so I think it's, you know, might not be, I don't know, as momentous, I don't want to disregard it, but as Planning Board and ZBA, but I think it's, I think it's a really important committee that does have a lot of long-term impact, so I think it's worth having a committee take a look at an appointment like this. So that's all I've got to say on that.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I'm, I have no problem with this going to committee. I'm just, under the guise of, you know, we're all trying to find ways to make council and committee work be less work, and therefore, you know, where we don't need to have appointments go to committees, I want to make sure that we're not doing that, but where we do feel like certain appointments do need to come to committee, I have no problem with it at all.
Thank you, Counsel Preston. Further discussion? All right, roll call on sending Appointment 366 to planning and development.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zee.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Pretty good.
All right, communications.
So is my number is correct? We are now at 118, application?
Yes.
Which is the Frigid Fiber?
Correct. Counsel Vogel.
For discussion, I'd like to make a motion to, well, I'd like to make a motion for a emergency preamble, and then, and maybe a motion to approve. So motion to, yeah.
Second.
Yeah, thank you.
Discussion?
There was a joint motion for emergency preamble and approval, correct?
Counsel Vogel?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. So we'll have a couple of questions, in fact, on it, and I probably should have talked to the clerk before I got here, but it came a little bit late. But this is a race that's done every year and with regularity, and I'm wondering, since, you know, I know, I know what goes into putting a race together, and this is happening, you know, the first part of February, and we're not going to be approving it until the end of January, I thought maybe we might be able to get ahead of it and give them the okay. The difficulty that I have with it as it stands is I don't see any authorized signatures on here, this came in without any authorized signatures.
It did initially come in, but I'm told that there are now, but they're not in the packet, so.
Essentially, it's complete, then, if would be if those were in there, so then I would.
I know for a fact there is insurance with the named insured correctly down there.
So I would beg the council, if it possible, that we could get an approval for an emergency preamble based on the timing, and then from there, maybe approve it for.
If I might suggest, subject to a review of the completed signatures.
That would be appropriate. Thank you very much.
Further discussion?
We're going to want, I don't know if you want to do them together, if you want to do them one at a time.
We can do them together.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve an emergency preamble, to make an approval, subject to the confirmation of signatures.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Roll call on said motion, Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zee.
No.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley. Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Further communications?
We have.
Motion to refer appointment, application 119 and 120, license and permits.
Thank you.
Collectively.
Second.
Thank you.
On the motion that's moved by Counsel Zee, seconded by?
Seconded.
All those in favor of sending both to license a permit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next communication?
Be a second reading of Appointment of Ajeth Matheson, Matheson, excuse me, 12 Hart Road, Electrical Inspector, until 2-1-2024.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
All those in, no, roll call.
On Appointment 360, Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zee.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane. Recuse. Thank you. Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes. Clerk Jones, did we skip Communication 457?
Yes.
We did.
Well, we did. Thank you. So Communication 457, which is the letter regarding the temporary appointment of Jamie Tucalo as Director of DPS.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Before you read the orders, motion to refer everything to Budget and Finance?
Second.
You could read them all. Every one of them goes to budget.
So, just for the record, that would be orders?
Well, I didn't want to interrupt you while you were reading, so, all of them, though. 404, all the way through 412.
404, 405, 406, 7, 408, 409, 410, 411, and 412.
One, I'm sorry, is 410.
Yeah.
That one doesn't go to budget. But 404, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12.
Up to 409, 411, and 412, excepting 410.
Correct.
There's a new year and a new mega motion by Counselor Zied to send all those to B&amp;F, correct?
And they are pay prior year bills, font gift acceptance, SAGA gift acceptance, cloudy sculpture gift acceptance, three cardinals in a tree sculpture gift acceptance, Cutter West End Fire Station loan order, which should have Committee of the Whole added to it, FY23 COLA increase, and COLA base increase.
Second.
So, which one has Committee of the Whole?
409.
Got it.
Cutter West End Fire Station loan order.
And that's the only one with Committee of the Whole, correct?
As far as I'm aware, that's what I was anticipating.
Everyone understand?
All right. All those in favor of moving everything to Budget and Finance minus 410, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And that was seconded by?
Me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proud of you.
That leaves 410, which is the screening committee for Fire Chief.
Motion to refer to Public Safety and Works?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of sending this 410 to Public Safety and Works, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
One no.
Point of clarity? Counselor McCauley and myself should probably recuse on that? No? Okay.
I don't think so. No conflict.
Okay.
You're not getting paid to move that, are you?
I'd like to get on it.
Not that I am.
All right. I think that gets us through the orders.
Or ordinances, maybe?
Onto ordinances.
And there are three ordinances. First ordinance is a second reading of the amendment to Chapter 5 Buildings.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Discussion? All those, roll call.
Second reading on Ordinance 125, Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunnehew.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, there's a scrutiny error in there. It's in the second paragraph.
Let me actually get the document if I can. The blue one?
Yes. It should be performing and not preforming.
Assist the clerk and tell me again.
Yeah, it should be, it says preforming the test.
Where are you?
It's in the 5.66, the second paragraph. It's towards the end, after it says Certified Soil E evaluator that will be performing, not preforming.
See it? I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Moving on to next ordinance. 133.
133 is an amendment to Chapter 13, 180, In Street, which proposes to increase the number of allowable permits from four to five.
Motion to send to Public Works and Safety.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Ordinance 134 is an amendment to municipal fees, scheduled passport photos, in essence, raising the cost of a photo from $10 to $15.
Motion to send this to General Government?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of sending Ordinance 134 to General Government, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, next section is committee items, so I figured I will read off everyone's names for the committee, since we did reorg last year. Thank you. Super Budget and Finance, we do have the same committee. Counselor Zied will be the chair with Counselor Khan and then Counselor Wright. Planning Development, Counselor Cameron will be the chair with Counselor Preston and Counselor Wright. Public Works and Safety, Counselor Wallace will be the chair with Counselor Donahue and Counselor McCauley being the other two. Community Services, Counselor McCauley will be the chair, Counselor Donahue and Counselor Preston will be on that committee. License and Permits, Counselor Vogel will be the chair with Counselor Khan and Counselor Lane. In General Government, I will chair with Counselor Vogel and Counselor Lane. I will say, since we are down to six, hopefully the six chairs can all agree on a specific time, because I do, I know Counselor Zied's already got his meetings posted for the year on the calendar. I think the rest of us can do the same within the week, so we can all be more efficient this year, so the public will know what's going on, as will all the rest of the counselors. With that being said, I just want to also note that the ad-hocs have all stayed the same, as have TSAC. No other changes, except just the committees. So, Counselor McCauley?
Just a question to the president. We had talked before the break about the dates that we were aligning to. Are you suggesting that, or in your discussions, have any of those dates shifted? For example, you know, Tuesdays were going to be two meetings, and Wednesdays was going to be another. Is the advice from the president that we should stick to those dates?
I would stick with that, and my advice, my hope is, my hope, and I hope we can all agree on this, that Budget and Finance will always be that Thursday. I hope on Mondays, we can do License and Permits and General Government back-to-back. Tuesdays, Community Services and Public Works and Safety, back-to-back. Wednesdays would be Planning and Development. That leaves the follow-on Thursday as a space in case we need something else, in case we have a Monday meeting that is canceled because of a holiday, but I think we can make that work. That way, we don't have any late files. That'll support the Clerk's office getting a packet pulled together in a timely manner, so hopefully folks can agree to that.
Do you mind just saying the days again, just because I...
Sure, I will, and I will also give this list to the clerk as well.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I would definitely hope that we could all get our calendars updated this week with those dates, and we can discuss times, too.
And so, you're talking, on Mondays, you're talking the off-Mondays, or the...
Yes, the off-Mondays.
Every off-Monday? So, what happens, okay, so just every, so every Monday following the City Council meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Not necessarily, yeah, got it.
Okay.
I can type that up and send out all the morning if you want.
I will. Okay, perfect, and I'll give this to you as well. And Counselor Donahue, I'll send this to you as an email tonight as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that being said, committee items. Counselor Vogel, Brown School.
Thank you, Counselor President. So, we met on the 15th, and I will put out to you tomorrow, well, this week, the last minutes of the last meeting, so that'll come out to you. So, at that meeting, we discussed the topics of RFI, a request for information versus a request for proposal. The difference being is that we intend, and it was voted in favor of going out with an RFI, so that we could go out to the community, we could go out to the developers, and ask them what they think. We're going to provide them what we'll be discussing at this meeting coming up this month. I think we're going to be on the 27th, I think is, I mean, I think it's the 17th and the 23rd and/or the 31st. I'll put that out. And we'll be discussing what goes in that RFI, which I believe is going to be quite a packet, because I think sort of everything related to the Brown School will go out to the world, and we'll ask them what they think, based on our four priorities that, or not even priorities, but four hopes and four insights into the building, and see what comes back. It's a smoother process, it doesn't tie us down, it gets us a lot more of information. So, that's what will be coming out. I'll get, as I say, I'll get the full draft of the minutes to you, and I'll continue to update you as we go along.
Thank you, Counselor Vogel. Market Landing Park, we did meet in November regarding Order 389 on the naming rights. I will get us another meeting on the calendar this month to continue that discussion. Appreciate what Counselor McCauley was trying to accomplish there, and I think we can get something completed, hopefully within the next month. But that's it for ad hoc. I'll let folks know when we can meet again. So, next is Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. No, nothing coming out tonight, just a couple of updates. We will have our first standing meeting on this Thursday, starting at 6:00 PM here, or hybrid, if you so choose. There are some Committee of the Whole items that I want to notice you of. The two biggest ones are definitely the two bond orders that we have, so we will be starting the conversation on 59 Low Street on Thursday. Various parties have been invited, the project team from the Planning Office, the department head from Newburyport Youth Services, the architect has an invitation as well, so we have a variety of folks that I believe are planning to attend. Then the other one is the one that was referred tonight, West End Cutter Station, that's now also Committee of the Whole. That project team has also been invited, so that would include Winter Street Architects, the Planning Office, Project Manager Jordi Vining, the president, the mayor mentioned inviting those folks. And then we have a whole bunch of gift acceptances in terms of our new process here, so we'll be taking those up. Those are not Committee of the Whole, but you're welcome to stay. So, the reason I wanted to bring that up is, obviously, we try and keep our meetings to roughly two and a half tops, so I'm not anticipating that, you know, we're going to get through everything, particularly with the big bonds, but I know some of them have been anticipated, so I'm letting you know that we're getting the conversation going. The only other two things I wanted to mention to you is two things that will be new for this year. One is, the CPA time has shifted. I mentioned this in a past meeting, but we're expecting to get the applications in much earlier, because they shifted back when applications could come in, really, sort of at my request or at our request, to try and get them away from budget, so that we wouldn't be trying... So, expect CPA to happen a lot earlier this year on the City Council side, hopefully before the budget even comes in, is the goal. And the second one is, finally, our Home Rule Charter was signed by the governor, which means we get to do Budget and CIP officially together this year, so I'm hoping that will help streamline our meetings and our timelines and our meets with making our discussions with department heads that much more, you know, useful, maybe a little bit longer, but we get to knock out two things in one meeting. So, those are two things that will be a little bit different, so I don't want anybody to be surprised if you see a CPA raft come in, like in March or so. So, Thursday at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zied. General Government, we have one order. We'll talk to the sponsoring council when they want to discuss that, so not this coming week. License and Permits, Counselor Vogel.
Nothing to report.
So, I will defer to Counselor Wallace, the former Chair of Neighborhood and City Services, unless you want to have Counselor McCauley into Community Services.
That's all?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you, President Shan. So, these are items that are coming out of Neighborhood and City Services. We cleaned them up right before the holidays, and we wanted to make sure we directed them to the right place, because Neighborhood and City Services kind of got split a little bit. So, I'm going to go out of order here, but I am going to start with motion to receive and file Communication 299, the Phillips Drive letter from the neighborhood. Second. This letter was written in February 2021, so I think it may be time to receive and file it, for a number of reasons. A lot has happened on this project in terms of designing and sending it out to bid. From what I understand, the construction materials are on site, and there was a backlog on some of the water pipes, so I assume they will be starting whenever they can. But this particular communication was a placeholder for the neighborhood to get project updates, and, you know, they're welcome to resubmit a letter to the new committee with their, if they have any concerns or just want project check-ins again. I think that's it. Committee voted 3-0 to approve, to receive and file.
Thank you. Further discussions or comments? Counselor Lane?
Yeah, I'm going to ask that this actually stay in committee until the shovels hit the ground, and I know the neighborhood would want that, so respectfully, I ask that it stays in committee until, like I said.
Assigned to Community Services, then? You wanted to go to the...
I want it to live, yeah.
Yeah, being in the right committee, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I know the neighborhood, I've had extensive communications with them, they're going to want that until the shovels hit the ground. I just, or I can, you know, or they'll just write more letters, so, one way or the other. I mean...
Counselor Wallace?
The reason I just wanted to get it out is because there is a new committee, or to receive and file it, and I, you know, things have changed in the last two years, and we also have a new administration, so I fully understand. I was just trying to clean things up, and I would, again, fully welcome any additional communications, and actually, as part of, I will be Chair of the, what is it, Public Works and Safety, I would be happy to even put it on the agenda first thing, or do a site walk, and get up to speed, and have the committee get up to speed, if that would be, that would work. So, I would still like to receive and file, but I'm open to hearing anybody else's thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Cameron?
Yeah, thank you. I think a site visit would be a great thing to do, because I haven't been down there in a while, and I think that kind of keeps it on, you know, lets residents know that we're still paying attention, and I think that would be a great idea. We can do that without violating, you know, open meeting law.
Counselor Cameron? Further discussion? Counselor Lane?
I think that would be great and welcome. They just, they had, we had a site update, and they dumped off a bunch of materials, and nobody knows when, so.
Further discussion? All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing Communication 299, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. All right, the next one I'm going to take is motion to receive and file Communication 406, Pioneer League and Pickleball. Second. So, this was another cleanup-type thing, again, because the committees are changing, different people are going to different places. This was voted in favor, 3-0, to receive and file, and this particular letter was written in the spring, and the concerns are with the public process of pickleball in Lower Atkinson, and concerns with crowding and parking, and how that would all work together. Now, since May, a lot has changed with the parks, so we've kind of put this on hold, and we are awaiting a revised plan from the administration for Lower Atkinson, and from what I understand from the previous order, in terms of accepting the money from the Moral Foundation last year, that it needs to go back to committee to accept that initial $40,000. So, I think this discussion will happen again at Budget and Finance, when we talk about the other moral money, and I do know that the playground equipment should be coming this summer, so that's very exciting, and I think we'll be able to see how that impacts the usage of the park and how busy it gets, so... And also, again, the Pioneer League is welcome to write another letter to the new committee with this new information, but just, again, to clean it up, we wanted to receive and file it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you, Counselor Wallace. All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing Communication 406, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right, the last one, this is a little trickier. I don't know if we had to do this by procedure, but we did. So, this is, so motion to remove from committee without recommendation, that passed 3-0, that was to bring, oh, motion to remove, you need to know what it is, Ordinance 103, Streets Ordinance 103, Streets and Sidewalks, out of committee. So.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
That's already done.
Well, so that was the thing. So, we weren't sure. The idea was then to send it back to the Public Works and Safety, because there was some crossover. So, maybe we don't need to do that, but it will be, we would like it to go to the.
Second. On the motion to refer to.
So, just Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety. And this was, this was the ordinance. Counsel McCauley and I co-sponsored it. And I think there was some support, in the sense that oversight of our streets and sidewalks is a good idea. There was some conflict on, did it need to be regulated or not? And we were going to kind of see how the year went. So, now, we've got one year under our belt with the Streets and Sidewalks plan, and I believe the administration will be submitting the next year to the Public Works Committee. So, that will be a good time to discuss all that together. And with that, that is it. Thank you.
All right, so I guess the motion on the floor is moving Ordinance 103 from Community Services to Public Works and Safety. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, thank you, Counsel Wallace. Counsel Cameron, Planning and Development.
Nothing to report.
All right. Public Works and Safety, I'll give Counsel McCauley one last stab at this one.
Thank you, Counsel President. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
May I report?
Counsel Wallace?
May I? Yes. As the new Chair of Public Works and Safety, it's going to be a busy committee, but I'm looking forward to it. We've got some veterans on with Counsel McCauley and Counsel Donahue. And what we're going to try to do is, we probably will meet every two weeks. And even if there's nothing on the agenda, which, or that comes in, which I doubt that's going to be the case, but we want to stay proactive and invite different departments in, talk about maybe some of the council's goals and what resources are available, whatever. Just have a bit more conversation and public forum for anything related to DPS, Public Safety, so. Looking forward to it. And we will do Phillips Drive first.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. All right, good of the order. Counsel Elaine?
I just wanted to take a minute and congratulate Dawn Shan on being sworn in as our representative this past week. So, congratulations, and I wish her well in her term.
Sure. Pass that on. Anything else? I have a few items here. All right, so one, I think everyone got the email from the mayor regarding using our city email addresses. I think that would be a big benefit if we all did that. We've also had the IT director set up a city council as a, so that if residents wanted to send everybody something as a whole, it would be City Council of Newburyport. He has it set up. We're just going to make sure it works correctly, so Counsel Donahue doesn't have any issues. But that's happening. Also, letting folks know the MMA Trade Show is the 19th and 20th. If people want to go, the mayor is graciously allowed. He would be footing the bill. So, if you want to sign up, registration is still open. And we will, similar to the school committee having their retreat, I'll put something out to all of you the next week, probably on the Off Thursday night, that we don't have Budget and Finance, which seems to probably be the only day we're not going to have a meeting. So, I'll put that out the next week and get everyone to vote on when we want to have that. And I think that's it on my part. Anything else? All right. So, executive session.
So, on behalf of the chairperson, I would announce the purpose, which is as follows. Pursuant to Chapter 38, Section 21, we are going into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to potential litigation involving roadways, buildings, and land use, including but not limited to Doyle Drive in Newport, Mass. Then we take a roll call to go in. And President, would you announce whether we're coming back out or not, or whether we will not be coming back out?
We are not coming back out.
Okay. Vote to go in?
Do I need to declare it?
You do.
Okay.
You need to declare that the meeting in open session would be detrimental to the city's litigation position.
I declare it will be detrimental to the. Didn't get all the words, but it will be detrimental if we declared, if we had this discussion in open session.
So noted.
Okay. All right, roll call. And we will not be coming out.
Mr. Roll call to go into executive session. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Elaine.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now in executive session.
All right.